Can you hear me? Everyone can hear me? Okay. We're calling the meeting over and I would ask that you please turn off all your cellphones and pay attention to the following and any other electronic devices that may be used. So, um, Senator Lawrence, if you will please lead us in the invocation of the pledge. You'll join us, please.
Gracious Father, once again we come before you. We come, dear God, thanking you for giving us an opportunity to be here. We thank you for health and strength. We thank you for bringing us through storm, through the wind, through the rain. We know, dear heavenly Father, that there is calm after the storm. We also know that the sun will shine. We ask, dear Father, that you bless those who have come this evening. Enable us to carry out the responsibilities of this hour. Blessed is the planning commission, blessed are the islanders, blessed are the planning and development staff. These blessings we ask in thy precious and sacred name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as our first principle.
I'm going to reiterate, if you will, please turn off your cellphones. Um, I'm going to review the meeting procedures right now. The planning commission hears your request for preliminary subdivision flats and site plans. Planning commission conducts public hearings on rezones, search planning documents, ordinance amendments. The planning commission makes final decisions on preliminary flats and site plans and makes representations to the board of commissioners on all other items. The planning staff presents the case to the planning commission during the staff report. This report evaluates how the proposal performs to the Glen County Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance, and other applicable regulations. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of applicants to make presentations on requests and to address any conditions or factual findings which they do not agree with. Public hearings will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position at time of audit. The applicant may then provide rebuttal in testimony. Chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate testimony. Um, speaker's time, and the speaker begins personal attacks. Good cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Um, next on our agenda item is approval of the August sixteenth, twenty sixteen IPC uh, regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Sir, second.
I will second it, but I have a comment. I'd like to request a clarification.
Any changes?
Yes, I'd like to request at the bottom of page seven and the bottom of, top of page eight, uh, with regard to the statements that I made, first I'd like to commend the county staff for the excellent work they do in trying to, uh, record these discussions. I would ask that the statement as it, uh, reads be, be replaced with the following. Mr. Meadows concurred with comments expressed about the impact of traffic on public safety. He asked the applicant if they felt the proposal at that location would be a positive impact for the community. He noted the applicant does not have the legal rights required for the project or use of county-owned right-of-way or to cut the trees on county property.
We need some more volume.
Any other changes?
That's okay.
All in favor of any changes made since amended? And one. Next slide on our agenda is a request to postpone an action or a decision to change this order presentation. Mr. Allen.
Madam Chair, uh, we have delivered to you a request, uh, to defer, uh, the preliminary subdivision flat for tonight's agenda, which is PB three-three-four-seven, the Park of Village Creek. Uh, they've requested it to be deferred to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is on Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Henley. Um, okay, a second motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor? Fifty minutes. One. Yes. No. Okay.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to defer SP three-three-four-six, College General, considering that we only got our updated site plan and information on Friday, if we need more time to consider it.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All is in favor of deferring to the item? Motion, careless, to defer.
Excuse me, Commissioner, would you clarify which date you're deferring that?
We're deferring it to our October eleventh, October tenth meeting.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, October eighteenth meeting. Thank you. I also have a request, uh, to change the agenda. Um, where I can pay, it says, uh, point, a search committee for filing, uh, position of vice chair of the Iowa's planning commission. That has already been accomplished, so at this meeting we will be, uh, electing a chair and a vice chair, and then I can come to, we have a motion on that, change?
So moved, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, all is in favor of changing the agenda?
Sure.
That's the end. Okay, thank you. Okay. Next item is a public hearing item, uh, for SUP three-three-zero-six, Weber's Ground Factory, Consider Request for Special Use to Allow a Drinking Establishment and Existing Retail Alcohol Sales Establishment. The property is located on the south side of Longview Shopping Center. The parcel is ninety-five feet from the intersection of Longview Plaza and Tridica Road. The parcel ID number is oh-four dash oh-two-two-five-two, Keller Weber, other and at. Mr. Henley?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, before you see, uh, located parcel in red, which is the entire shopping center area?
I don't think it's turned on, but...
Yeah, it is. It is, it's not a real break mine, but...
Do you please get into the mic?
I am.
Debbie, can you pick it up out of this?
All right. Okay. As, as previously stated, located, uh, on the screen, surrounded by the red line, is the entire shopping center. With the star indicated approximately of the facility in that shopping center. Uh, this shows the, uh, aerial, of that area, again, with the star indicating where the current ground of, uh, factory is located. Um, this is pictures in front of the store, that's currently in there. Uh, this is a picture of the linear, uh, composite of that, that building on that side of the plaza. Uh, this shows some more of the development within the, in the shopping center area. Uh, this is considered a special use to allow a drinking establishment and it's an alcohol one. This is transforming this one into a drinking establishment. Yeah, applicant already said beer, uh, for, uh, consumption, this, this will, uh, change that to be consumption on grounds. Uh, this is a possible approval. There is a site plan presented as part of this. Um, there, uh, what you would be doing is approving this special use that would then offer it to the board of commissioners. Um, Mr. Riley can address, there is a pending ordinance amendment deal to fix the particular situation, uh, because of the zoning, uh, for the area and, and the distance requirements currently in the alcohol ordinance and the zoning ordinance do not mesh right now, if there's a distance, and this is a correction for that. As Mr. Henley alluded to, we have two ordinances at play here. Uh, one is the zoning ordinance, and under the zoning ordinance, this Weber is applying for a special use permit after a new establishment. Obviously, drinking establishments in Glen County also need an alcohol license, that is a word, uh, considered by the board of commissioners. Right now, uh, because of the distance of her establishment from a piece of property zone residential, she would not be eligible for an alcohol license. The board of commissioners is slated to consider an amendment to their alcohol licensing ordinance at the first meeting in October to allow a, a drinking establishment in that location, at that type of location. Um, if that ordinance were adopted and if the board of commissioners were to grant a special use permit, then this Weber would be eligible to apply for her alcohol license. So, uh, the alcohol license has not been adopted yet. It's going to be considered by the board at their October meeting. Uh, so essentially, this special use permit application and that ordinance amendment would be heard by the board of commissioners at the same meeting. If both were approved, then this Weber would be allowed to apply for her alcohol license, and then she would be, uh, have that license, considered as such for me.
So if we thought to approve this, then it would be subject to, is that what you're saying?
Well, you're making recommendations to the board of commissioners, um, so they could, you know, follow your recommendation and decide not to. Um, I think the sequence that we were probably going to follow at the meeting would be, they would consider the alcohol ordinance amendment first, if that did not pass, I, I don't see that they would, like, uh, yeah, they would honestly, they would grant a special use permit.
Thank you. Any more questions of staff?
As to the special use permit, are there specific conditions that would be attached to that?
You have the ability to attach in special conditions, or to suggest in special conditions. Uh, I, I think, if you're asking if there are, what considerations are, uh, for special use permit, uh, they're very similar to the consideration for a rezoning application. Is it compatible use, is it adjoining properly, uh, that's what I think.
Is there, is there anything in here that would limit this to beverages produced at that location, or would they be eligible to sell any beverages?
If they're a drinking establishment, under our alcohol licensing ordinance, that's essentially a bar, that can sell beer, wine, or liquor. However, the ordinance amendment that's proposed, that will be heard by the board of commissioners, would create, as currently proposed, would create three different categories of bars. One would be a full-service bar, which could serve beer, wine, or liquor. One would be a beer-only, we call it lounge in the ordinance, so it would be a beer-only lounge, it's just what it sounds like, can only serve beer.
I have one question. This is a relatively small area we are talking about. How many people can they accommodate in accordance with the regulation?
How many patrons do they accommodate? I don't...
It's very small. Now, even if you had four tables in there, you would only have about twenty people.
Right. I, I, I don't know the answer, what capacity of the building would be, or we, I think a lot of it would depend on how they arrange the material of the building.
It's not that much arrangement that can be done, that's the question I'm raising. Okay, I think it's something we need to look at in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence, maybe I can... Any more questions of staff? Staff, if you're present? Would you please come forward to the mic? I guess the microphone's down a little bit, but we have some questions. Mr. Lawrence, you can ask the other questions. Um, yes, it's me, yes. Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, Kelly, I, I met you before. My question is, how many people do you think you will be able to accommodate in the area? What is the size of the area that we're talking about? Do you have any idea?
The square footage of the whole store is eighteen-hundred-and-sixty square feet. And we're looking to put in two, maybe three tables max.
Okay. And what's the, how large is that area?
Um, twenty by whatever the width of the store is, it's thirty feet.
All right. You're fancy, my boy.
Any more questions from the applicant? Thank you very much. Since this is a public hearing, I'm going to ask, is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward. You got five minutes, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, I rise to speak in favor of this application. I also rise to speak in favor of the notion that this planning board should spend more time, should be allowed by the county commission and by change in county ordinance, to spend more time on public hearings, to actually have public hearings on site plan applications.
So I'm going to ask you to keep your, I'm going to ask you to keep your...
I know, I will, I'm out of order.
That's correct.
But there, this, this county is in bad shape because the county commission allows itself to waste time...
Sorry, so I'm going to ask you, please, please have a second.
Alcohol permit.
Please have a second.
Yes, I'm out of order, thank you.
That's correct. Thank you.
Out of order and proud of it!
Well, you know, in fairness to the applicant who's in for us, I'd like to know if there's anyone else who'd actually want to address what's before us and is probably in favor of it. Are there anyone who wants to speak in favor of this application? Yes, ma'am?
I'm just, one question. There are any serving for you, right?
We need you to go to the mic, and if you have a question?
There are any allowed to serve beer, is that correct?
Could you please give us your name?
Oh, Kathy.
Kathy.
Wayland.
Thank you. And your question?
I don't think I understood what you were saying in the beginning. Are there anybody allowed to serve beer?
Right. Okay. So...
Ma'am, right now...
Sell and take home.
Right now, they're alert, allowed, they sell beer for consumption off the premises, so they can, they put in a package and it goes off premises. This would allow consumption on the premises at that location.
Okay. Okay, well, I think they should be able to, by themselves. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward, speak in favor of the application? Ma'am?
I don't know if he'll be able to answer. I have everybody speak.
Okay. All right, hearing none, seeing none, is there anyone who wants to speak who is opposed to this application? Please come forward. Hearing none, seeing none, all the hearings closed. Did you have a comment? She did. Well, okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say that we're only asking just sort of beer, no alcohol, nothing's changing in that situation, so...
And why?
And why?
Yes, there's a one, yes. And all right, all right, so, okay. Thank you for the time, please. Commissioners, do you have any discussion? Uh, Chair, will you entertain a motion?
I'll move acceptance of the, if they can give me the better reading. I move to approve the special use application SUP three-three-zero-six, subject to the acceptance by the board of commissioners of the proposed zoning change that pertains to this proj- project.
I second.
It's, it's not a zoning, it's an alcohol ordinance.
Alcohol ordinance.
And we have a second. All is in favor of the motion? If there are any others who are standing at this, and so, all right. Okay. And the Park Village Creek, that's been deferred. Our next item is a site plan for SP three-three-four-two, the Pilar Hotel. Consider Request for Site Plan Approval for a New Three-Storing Twenty-Sixteen Unit Hotel Located at Twelve Hundred Ocean Boulevard on St. Simon's Island. This property is owned by Highway Commercial and is located at the intersection of Ocean Boulevard and Neptune Boulevard. Parcel ID number oh-four dash one-four-one-seven-eight. Larry Bryce, an agent for the Old Scottages Partners LLC, applicants and owners. Mr. Henley?
This is mine, uh, Casey did. No problem. Uh, on the slide that you see before you, the highlighted parcel is where the proposed Polar Hotel, uh, is located, that they're requesting, uh, site plan approval for. I'm circling it with my mouse so you can see it. I have a picture of the property, uh, up on the screen now. As you can see, this is from across the street. And this is a view of where I took the pictures from. Uh, the three building, the three shops across the street, single story, uh, as you can see, I believe that's Crab Daddy's right next to it, um, and I think there's some vegetation and then a, a street, uh, to the left. Here is the view looking down Ocean. These are the buildings across the street from Polar. This is where Polar will be, or is proposed to be located. There is a small overflow parking lot right there, I believe it's all dirt, and then you have, uh, the Decoy Restaurant right here. And this is the corner of Neptune and Ocean. The site is to my back and to the left, and this is across the street from Polar, or proposed Polar, and here is Ocean. Here is the proposed site plan. Ocean Boulevard is up here. I had it cut off a little bit so that you can see the entire, um, parcel. Neptune is right here. There is no proposed connection to Neptune on this site plan. There's one, uh, entry and exit right here on Ocean Boulevard. It is on the side that's closest to that overflow parking area and to Decoys. This is the proposed landscape plan. That's an amber alert. Um, so again, Ocean is up here. Here is the type E buffer that is required along the front of the property, along Ocean. Here is where the type A buffer would be located. The applicant is requesting that you all approve a modified twelve-foot type A buffer with a, um, a landscape wall, I believe ten foot, ten foot high landscape wall. The Xs are the trees that will be taken out, um, and the little circles are all of the new plantings. There's also an eight, I believe an eight-foot tall, uh, landscape wall that will be in the front, uh, in that landscape buffer. Just to see it a little bit closer, here is the rear, what, uh, the applicant is proposing, the alternate type A buffer. Here is the rear of the property, just to give you all, uh, perspective. Here are the three houses that are built, uh, right, that would be to the, to the rear of the property. Ocean is over here. Um, I believe it's Forest is over here. These houses front on Forest, and Neptune would be behind, behind me.
Can you show us, maybe that is, can you show us how close the proposed building would be to those residences?
I have, uh, something that Carl did for us. Uh, we have the houses right here. They are, I'm guessing, uh, and I'm guessing because I saw that, uh, all of the stairs are turned sideways instead of forward, uh, instead of going out the back straight, but I believe those are all at seven feet, uh, in the rear yard, and the car is parked at approximately twenty-five feet away. So if you could take, uh, you have seven feet from this side, and then you have the rest, uh, you can see it's, in my opinion, i- it's a little tight in here. Here are the elevations for the proposed hotel. This is the rear elevation. Uh, and one thing, if you notice, uh, there is, uh, not a lattice, but a screening, uh, I will let the applicant explain what that is, a screening for the parking garage on the ground level. And here's the front elevation that will be facing Ocean. This is the left elevation that will be facing Decoy, and this is the right elevation that will be facing Neptune. Ocean would be over here, Neptune would be right here. And...
I'm still unclear, how...
Yes, sir.
What is the difference between the back of those homes?
Yes, sir.
And the building, the hotel?
It would be, hold on.
Twelve plus seven?
Yes, sir, about eighteen feet. Hold on. Um, section five-oh-two states that no building shall be erected to exceed the height limitation here, which is thirty-five feet for HC zone. It goes on to limit structures on St. Simon's Island to three habitable stories, provided, however, that the area above the uppermost habitable story may be used for storage of mechanical equipment and/or ventilation system. As seen on the previous elevation, the elevator shaft, uh, or mechanical room ends, uh, excuse me, exceeds the height by three-point-two-five feet. I'm going to go back to the elevations. It's a little difficult to see in here, but the mechanical room for the elevator is right here, and it does exceed three-point-two-five feet above, uh, the thirty-five feet, which makes it thirty-eight-point-two-five feet, uh, at the topmost point of the building. The applicant is requesting a site plan approval to construct the three-story, twenty-seven-unit hotel. The total site area is point-four-four acres. Thirty-six parking spaces are required and shown on the site plan. An off-street loading space is not required. A type E buffer is required and shown along Ocean Boulevard, and the applicant has added a screening wall, which is beyond the buffer requirements. The applicant is requesting approval of a twelve-foot alternate type A buffer in lieu of the regular twenty-foot type A buffer that would be at the rear of the property. Within the alternate type A buffer, the applicant has shown a ten-foot wall in place of the ordinance requirement of a six-foot wall, and has added more plants than required, and proposed that these plants are larger than required. And given the allowable rear yard setbacks, uh, for HR and RR zone, uh, they're both seven feet, and the heights in HC, it's thirty-five feet, and RR, it's forty-five feet. Uh, those are the maximum height limitations for those zoning districts. For the two adjoining districts, the proposed commercial hotel use for this site may have a compatibility issue with the adjacent single-family homes. An interparcels access easement to the adjacent commercial property is required, and staff recommends that the county engineer examine the plans and the site plan to determine where and if this access point can safely be constructed, because the adjacent use is a parking lot for business owners across Ocean as well, and we don't want to have any cases of people staying in the hotel using the parking spaces for the active businesses. So we would like for the engineer to examine where, uh, where and if that is a possible, uh, placement of that access easement. The applicant has provided all of the information that's required on the site plan and the landscape plan, except for that interparcels access easement, easement, excuse me, which needs to be evaluated by the county engineer. All right, now I'm going to have a little... All right, now I'm going to have a little trouble reading that. I believe it says, these are the most recent JWSC comments. And the top one says it's okay with comments that JWSC has completed the review for the site plan, the proposed construction meets JWSC requirements. But note that sufficient documentation downstream. Their wastewater conveyance capacity currently does not exist. The developer has submitted a proposal to facilitate upgrades to provide capacity improvements. The JWSC approves the site plan with the condition that the agreement is met in full and the capacity improvements are completed prior to construction. The second bullet says the developer will provide a whole harmless agreement prior to approved, prior to approval and proceed at their own risk. So JWSC approves with conditions. The proposed development will generate an estimated 270 additional ADT. That's average daily traffic, average daily trips per day. Ocean Boulevard has approximately...
Eight thousand five hundred and forty-one.
Eightty-two, thank you, at the nearest available data point. These are the traffic tables. They are impossible to read up on the board. I did, I did print some out for your commissioners to have. I will put this presentation on the web for you all to see as well tomorrow morning. And you all can review it at your leisure, of course. And peak season traffic. Possible actions for this, this case is to approve the site plan as presented. And that would mean you are approving the alternate type A 12-foot buffer and do, is it the height? And the height variance for 3.25 feet above the existing maximum height. You can approve the site plan with other specified conditions. You can defer action, or you can deny the application. And I have possible motions up on the floor, or, excuse me, up on the board. And would like to answer any questions you all may have for us right now.
Questions to stand?
I have a question.
Could you pick up the microphone?
I have a question. And according to my 719 minutes, it states that there will be a 21-unit hotel. The looking at material I have here today, it states that we're going to have a 27-unit hotel. Can that be clarified, please?
Yes, sir. I believe what you're referring to is a different application. Once the planning commission denied the Polare Hotel application, the applicant reapplied. And this is a brand-new application. So that accounts for the differences in the, in the proposed site plan and hotel.
Thank you.
Other questions to stand, please?
Yes, sir.
Casey, thank you. In our package, we were given a letter from JWSC, June 6, 2016, to Mr. Hanley, which is significantly different than the comments they could put up on the board there tonight. Is there something new that we did not see, or is it in the packet and I missed it?
I'd like for Mr. Hanley to answer that, if he can, please.
The applicant more, had more clearly addressed this issue, but there was a meeting with JWSC last week, to which point JWSC clarified their position on this and also on the other site plan that was deferred regarding the sewer capacity for those two applications. They have had this policy about non-competitive improvements, where essentially the developer will agree to pay for it, approvals to their system. And that was not in place until late Friday, Friday end, when these comments came out. It came out after our staff report had prepared this NTR.
So I believe what JWSC has said is that they would be willing to accept a request. That's not the same as approving it, is it, correct?
I think it says that if you fully implement their agreement, their agreement would require you to build a construction per their specifications. Essentially, in this one, we are dealing with pump issues, as I understand it. So they'd be paying to replace some pumps in a wet well, which I think is 2002.
Is that a yes or no?
I'm trying to answer your question. I'm not sure it addresses it, but JWSC has this policy, and you wouldn't, as with anything that affects their system, have to build per specifications before they would accept it. And they would approve it before it would go on out. We've just made a major modification as part of now road to their system by putting plenty of enforcement out there. And it was all built and expected per their systems.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
They, JWSC will not let an owner connect with the system until they've approved the approvals to the system.
Other questions to stand?
Candace, could you just go over again, this is about the loading, you said about where they're going to be loading and unloading things?
No, no loading zone is required for the hotel. They, I believe they don't meet the maximum or the minimum square footage required. There's no threshold.
Hotels is not a list of use that has to have a loading zone.
That's curious to me. How you have a hotel of this nature having a loading zone. So is that, they would park in the street below it, if they had things to load and unload, they would park?
No, 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 the loading, in that context refers to tractor-trailer loading zones. They're 10-by-50. They are designed for tractor-trailer unloading within commercial facility sites.
Any other discussion? Stand? Stand up and present. Let's say your name.
My name is Boris, I am representing the owner of Polare. I just wanted to make a statement by saying that we are in compliance with our hotel. We're in compliance with all ordinances, especially the site plan. I also would like to make a few corrections. We are requesting a new application to the type A buffer. We are just using the option, the alternate pipe A. Got approved by our commissioners. Just an alternate for the asking for a change. The second one is the height. There's a elevator shaft, there's an exemption in H17 that allows us to adjust the height. And then for the, you know, connected parcel, we don't have curbage or fence. So we can't pay the other person's lot or remove their fence, but we do have a connected I know that Daisy has made some corrections to the staff report, if you can bring that up. Oh, and we were also compliant with joint.
He said that they were also compliant with joint water and sewer.
So have you signed any agreements with them, the joint water?
Yes, yes, it's a, it's a, it's a...
Any questions for the applicant?
I have one additional question. How much of ground is impervious?
I mean, it's a percentage I have on site plan, but there's a part of the ground.
There is 29, or, excuse me, 66% impervious.
66?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And you said that Mr. Hanley... You said Mr. Hanley had made some changes to the staff report. Do we have those?
The changes had to do with the request for modifications, request for modifications to not work. And then joint water had, you know, that would change in force, which is the system of how we do, where they added their... I was saying that I was not making a modification to the type A buffer. And that the, and that joint water had included some additional information in force of the system of how we do. So that's not...
I have a question. On the prior site plan, I believe you would agree to a 10-foot fence. Is that correct before, and now you've changed that to be a 10-foot natural buffer?
No. We have, as I recall, we have an eight-foot wall on the type E buffer, which is going over and above, and we are going to pay a 10-foot fence in the alternate type A, I think the requirement is on eight foot.
What I'm trying to, what is the size and composition of the buffer between the residents behind the signs?
It's not, it's four foot.
And how tall is the ground?
I'm going to leave that for the...
Thank you. Name, please?
Larry Bryson.
Mr. Bryson, how tall is the ground? Is it eight feet?
We're using the screen, the, the lattice, the, to keep it alive. Well, I'm...
Could you pick up your mic? I'm having trouble with it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So the last picture is a box, fixed, just overdrive, considering the screening on the building between the columns is a, is a set of rocks that screws to protect the rest of it.
Can you discuss the drainage issues? What can discuss that?
We'll be storing the drainage on site. We'll be complying with the...
Well, okay, I believe you do that. So have you discussed, I think you're, you're, you have to plug in your drainage to a joint water and sewer system, right?
No, it's a can.
All right, with can system.
Yes, sir.
And the flow, there's some issues with the flow of that?
We will be restricting the flow. We will be meeting the precondition flow for the site.
I'm afraid I didn't quite understand what you were saying about joint water and sewer again. Do you have approval in hand to hook up at such time as they can meet their capacity problem?
We are complying with the... So there's nobody that has checked out and said they...
No, I asked you if you had in hand approval from them.
We don't, we don't get in hand approval from anybody.
I had an opportunity to visit the site, which I appreciate. There was a mention made at that time about something related to the trees on the site, and I didn't quite follow. Could you explain to me what's the situation with the trees and what will be done there?
I'm not sure what the issue with the trees is.
I have another question about the drainage. And when I met with your representative, they indicated to me that the project would be willing to proceed with pervious pavement for the entire cleared area as opposed to part, part being impervious. And so is that now part of your new plan, because I didn't see it on that?
I'm adding sore, I'm an owner. Discussing trees, Bert met with a big guy on the previous plan, which hasn't changed as far as pervious and impervious. And they voted for approval, but I was trying to say, you know, it's true on site. So that's what we discussed. For pervious and impervious, we would, in terms of conditions to the approval, turn the asphalt, the concrete into pervious.
Thank you. One other question you mentioned about the elevator shaft, and I believe I heard you say, I may not have heard it correctly, that the elevator shaft is exempt. Did you mean that it would be exempt if we exempted it?
Now, it's in the, it's exempt from the height requirement, H17.
Mr. Meadows, I believe he's referring to section 617 of the zoning ordinance. And I would disagree with this assertion that it is an automatic exemption. You have to vote to allow that exemption.
We have to make findings under 617?
Well, there are some factors for you to consider. You could always incorporate that into your vote tonight. But the purpose of 617 is for you to consider an exemption and then take a vote to allow
I have those facts. Does anyone have any more comments or questions for the applicant?
I'd just like to ask one clarification. You've already, you've already voted on this application once before, right? We denied it.
That's right, sir. It was denied a 320.
We denied it at fewer units.
Correct.
So why would we vote for more units?
As Casey mentioned before, our ordinance allows for an applicant to refill a site plan. And so essentially, you're considering the new site plan.
I'm vaguely aware of the refilling.
Right.
But the, are these units smaller than the original units proposed?
I can't, I don't understand.
But footprint's still the same, right?
I couldn't tell you. The building footprint is the same?
So it's a bigger footprint and more units?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? Chair, any other questions?
Madam Chairman. I thought that was a microphone.
It is. You just have to pick it up.
I move to deny application BP. I may have the wrong one. I move to deny site plan application SP 3342 as not being in compliance with section 619.4 of the zoning ordinance.
Sir, second?
I second it.
All is in favor of the motion, pray your hands. It's still not a motion applied, ladies and gentlemen. All opposed to the motion?
Madam Chairman, where do we stand on the vote at this present time? No?
We have, how many, how many, let's do it again, please, so we can get the vote. Right. How many are opposed, how many are in favor of the motion? 2 to 9. That's it. How many opposed to motion to deny? How many abstained? Thank you. All right. That's case of denial. All right, ladies and gentlemen, so we now have a public hearing for BP 3358, 628 Mayo Street. We're going to give it a moment. It's going to take about 30 seconds to propose here.
It's not a public hearing.
It's a public hearing.
Or actions as a part, it's any other.
Other actions. It's a public hearing.
Or other public hearings or actions.
So this is not a public hearing?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, if you could please exit and take your conversations outside, we still have a meeting to be done. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to start our meeting again. If you're still in the building, would you please have a seat? If not, please exit quietly, so we can continue our business. The next item, correctly, is not a public hearing, and it's BP 3358, 628 Mayo Street. Consider village preservation application approval for the addition of a screen porch as part of a single-family building at 628 Mayo Street, provided on the west corner of Mayo Street or Leander Street, parcel ID number 04-04736, John Wayne's advocate and owner. Can we sit simply quiet in the back of the room? Thank you. No one? Stan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The subject property is shown on the screen in the middle by the red square right here. It is on the corner, as you said, of Oleander and Mayo Street. This is a picture of the house. This is the location where they want to put the screen porch addition. It is to the left of the house, as you're looking at the house. This is down Mayo Street, just gives you an indication of what the, the character of the street. This is the house across the street from, from 628 Mayo. And this is looking at the side of the house while you're on Oleander. And again, here is the location the applicant wants to build the screen porch. It's right on this front side. Here is a little bit of a site plan that the applicant drew up for us. This right here is the proposed new porch. The front door is about right there. This is the living room area. Here's the little bedroom expansion that was approved two months ago. The applicant would basically just like to extend this, this portion of the house to create that screened-in porch. It's going to be the exact dimensions of that portion of the house, 12 by 14, I believe. The applicant would like you to consider approval for the construction of a screened porch on the northeast side of the house. The porch will be painted the same color as the rest of the house, and the size of the proposed porch is 12 feet by 14 feet. The possible motions are on the screen for you, and I'd like to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions for staff?
I'm just curious, is that chain link fence in compliance in front yard?
Yes, sir. Well, as far as I know, chain link fences are allowed. My guess is it's on the property line or.
It's too close to the right way, maybe.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Staff with the present, thank you.
I'm Bill, we move application, Dean Roberts. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Oh, thank you.
I would guess the whiskey's down there around there, aren't they? So you can't sit outside.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roberts. I just had a comment that I did notice on the setbacks, part of the screen is in one place, it's 16.5 feet or something like that, the other side is 24.1 feet from the property line, so it's well, well from the setbacks area. All right, thank you. Any other discussions? Chair, under your motion?
I move to approve application BP 3358.
I'll second.
All is in favor of the meeting? So you have a, thank you, sir. Next item of the business is, no. The next item of the business is we're going to elect a chair and vice chair. So, any other?
We admit I nominate Desi Watson to be chairperson, and I'm also nominating Stan Humphries as vice chair.
Is that in form of election, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Can we take those one at a time?
You want to take them one at a time? All right, let's take them one at a time.
Nominate Desi Watson for chairperson for the remainder of this year.
Thank you, sir, second?
I second that.
All is in favor? Yes.
I nominate Stan Humphries for vice chair for the remainder of the year.
Second.
All is in favor? Opposed? So, so I will be chair for the rest of the year, and so I will be the chair for the vice chair. And maybe you have one more question?
No, it's not too late. I would like to have a little bit of a crowd, but this is fine. I'd just like to apologize to Glen County citizens and to this planning commission for being absent for the last two meetings. The reason I was absent was a family commitment my wife and I made over a year ago, which was long before I was ever appointed to this board. I particularly regret missing the last meeting when I was accused of having an obvious conflict of interest, especially when the county attorney's office and the county staff and the commissioner appointed me said I had done enough in the law. So I just wanted to let everybody know that I'm, I'm not going to refuse myself. I don't have any confidence that I'll be a commissioner next year, but I do appreciate the opportunity to serve this year.
Thank you.
I hope the public recognizes that what we do is not easy, and we're governed by laws sometimes we don't like. But just because we might vote for a site plan application doesn't mean we're for that particular. We're looking at the law that's on it. So, you know, I think it's been true that we vote for a site plan application, we're for it, and we're storied in emails and in public, and it's, you know, it's not fair to any of us, I think, to take it out that way on a vote. I don't have an agenda, I don't think anybody up here has an agenda, but we've got a responsibility. When we make these decisions, you know, we need to base it on the facts of the law, and maybe something nobody wants, nobody likes, but there's nothing in the ordinance that says if you don't like it, if you don't want it, you can do it. There's nothing in it that says that. So I just wanted to get that out, and I like the ordinance, and we look at ways if it's compliant, it's not compliant, and that's the reason for these public meetings, to go over that and discuss it, so just wanted to make that comment.
I'd also like to make a comment, and that when I made my remarks at the last meeting, that I was not aware that the county attorney or assistant attorney had approved Mr. Ellis' meeting with the applicant, and that I did not mean to at all obtain his integrity, and I apologize profusely for it, for having done something.
Thank you. At the beginning of the meeting, I was too slow, I was going to ask if maybe we could add something to the agenda, and I would like to have an update for Mr. Howers on the plans for recruiting for the vacant positions. I talked to him briefly about that, and we have here in Glen County a very rare opportunity.
Is that a, is that a motion that you may come to add that discussion to the agenda?
I'd just like to ask our county manager a question.
It's the purview of each commissioner, yes. Each commissioner.
Well, we'll let it go ahead.
Well, if I'm out of order.
Commissioners, if you want to have that discussion, I would recommend that you take a vote to add on to each one of that.
We do, we do need to add it. So you want to.
I'd also say that I'm not sure from the purview of the high planning commission to demand a report from our county manager. You're welcome to see if you want to hear that from them.
I think we should use another forum.
Thank you. I have no intention of abandoning anything from county manager, I simply believe it's appropriate for this body to show interest in the process because it's critical, every thing that we do here for the whole county, not just the island, filling those positions is a major challenge facing our county, and I think it's incumbent, and it affects everything we see in front of us, so I think it's incumbent on us to show interest and offer assistance, and that was a comment I would have made, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we just have just an announcement of upcoming, upcoming high planning commission will be due to be out October 18. Location will be determined. Okay. Anything else, gentlemen, ladies? Move aside. Um, thank you.